I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good thing there was only one chief here, huh? All right. First item on the agenda is public comments, and I'll just keep announcing this because I don't want us to get hung up. If there's a lot of public comments, there's not tonight, but usually we'll keep it somewhat limited and then we will finish up at the end if we need to. You limit it to three minutes, your comments please, and Nate, our city attorney, is the timekeeper. So the first one on the list tonight is Brittany, so if you come forth and give us your name and the city you reside in, I'd appreciate it, so. Hello?
In engineering school, I was taught the first step in solving a problem-
Can you speak, Brittany, can you speak in the microphone, please?
Name and address.
I'm sorry, it's weird with all this.
Yeah, your name and-
I'm extremely nervous.
Okay.
It's okay.
I want to make sure I get it all in my three minutes.
Okay, all right.
It hasn't started yet.
My name is Brittany Elm. I live in Coos County. I live over on the east side, and what I have to tell you has to pertain to where I live. When I was in engineering school, I was taught the first step in solving a problem is identifying the problem. On August 28th, DEQ referred my complaint to the city regarding sewage odor and leaching at Spring Tide Mobile Home Park. The discharge from my neighbor's sewer connection continued, so on September 8th, I called the city and Code Compliance issued a fix-it ticket to Spring Tide for the malfunctioning sewer connection, but did not address my sewer gas complaint, despite recording an ER visit on September 6th prompted by a call to emergency response regarding acute exposure to sewer gas. At a follow-up with Code Compliance on September 11th, 2020, the sewer was observed to discharge into the inlet pipe, and Code Compliance stated, "Okay, that's good enough for us." However, there is no confirmation that the discharge flows through the sewer laterals as specified by code, and compliance officers do not test for the presence of sewer gas. There is substantial evidence the sewer system at this site is in a state of failure. I have prepared a brief analysis to describe observations and research I have conducted pursuant to a preliminary site investigation to substantiate my claims. While the observed phenomenon can be elegantly explained by inadequate ventilation in a variable pressure system, the city engineers have instead narrowed their focus to the plumbing within my trailer and neglected to conduct a proper inspection of the sewer system on-site to ensure it is compliant. On September 15th, 2020, I spoke with Greg from the engineering department-
One minute.
-who stated that the city does not regulate the discharge of raw sewage on private property. However, as DEQ has issued an NPDES permit for public systems in Coos Bay, failure to enforce code for discharges of untreated sewage compromise the city's permit with DEQ. I live in a mobile home park. Many of my neighbors are elderly, disabled, and homebound. My education is unique to the setting, so while my neighbors may be experiencing similar plumbing phenomenon and illness, they have not been disciplined to correlate those phenomenon to a particular cause or talk to advocate for their rights. I am a canary in a coal mine, simply here to say I think there is a potential disaster lurking underfoot. I am here to humbly request that the sewer system on-site is given a proper investigation. I do not believe my concerns have been addressed, and I am here today only because I fear the repercussions of inaction. Out of love and concern for my neighbors and community, I am here only to vouch for our mutual benefit to sustain the park for all who need this place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany.
Great job.
The gas has made me very sick, and so it's hard for me to breathe.
Okay.
I have some reports here. I'm happy to email them because of the germ stuff.
That'd be perfect.
I have some park copies here as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So from what I can gather, and council step in and make any comments you'd like, and Roger, I'm thinking of asking you or Jim to also kind of chime in. Seems like this is more of an administrative thing than a legislative thing, that we would decide. This has got to do with compliance and some other things with DEQ and whatever, so can you enlighten us a little bit on this?
Yes, actually, it would be an administrative issue if we had jurisdiction and authority to do the inspection. But as Code Compliance and as engineering has advised, we don't have authority to regulate a private sewer system on private property, only when it connects to the city sewer system. So it's more of a landlord-tenant issue.
So is this-
I discussed this briefly with our city attorney, and he concurs.
I agree, it is. She's having a problem with her landlord in terms of the maintenance on that property, and apparently they're not getting along. So there's only so much the city can do in those circumstance.
I'm curious, when it relates to public health and safety, we were able to take some steps to nudge the property owner along, like with the American Building. I don't know if that would be a possibility in this scenario.
Well, we can always refer it over to the Health Department, but DEQ's already been notified, and they would have some authority over if there's a actual sewage spill on that property.
Okay.
But Jim, I'm guessing that you could refer it over to the Health Department, at least get an advisory to them?
Yes, we'll get to the right department.
And so the other action besides that would be a legal action, is that correct, Nate?
Legal action against the landlord, yes.
Right. So Brittany, I hope that gave you some advice on where to go on this. The city will follow up with the Health Department, but besides that, we are limited in what we can and can't do by law. And so if there's something else needed, as our city attorney said, you might want to look at some legal action, and hopefully this will get resolved. And I'm sorry that you're going through this difficulty, and hopefully, like I said, I think we all feel the same way that this is not fun, and it's a real trying time for you, so hopefully you can get this resolved.
I'm doing whatever I can just to get the message out there that human beings should be treated with respect.
Sure, I totally understand.
I appreciate your time and the clarity on the subject, because I'm getting some mixed messages, so that helps me a lot in how we resolve this.
All right, and send that stuff to us, and so we'll have copies of it, and so it-
Yeah, I'll make sure I get your verbatim.
So is this a, is this a septic system?
Well, what you have is you have a trailer park, and the trailer park itself has its own internal sewage system, the collection system or the laterals. And then once it connects to our main, then it becomes the city's responsibility.
Okay.
But as long as it's on the private property, it's just like a homeowner, the homeowner's responsible for their own lateral. In this case, the landlord's responsible for all the laterals within the park.
I see. And so I'm assuming that we've checked our connection from the park, is that something?
Yeah, it's not the connection from the park, it was actually a connection to one of the trailers.
Oh, okay.
And I believe that there's some belief that maybe there's other trailers that have poor connections, or maybe the pipes themselves may have some issues.
Yeah.
Roger, we have the insurance that I think last year we told all the citizens about the laterals. You could purchase that and then protect your property. Is that something that would apply to this situation?
I don't believe so, because I believe that's for residential properties only and not for rentals.
Okay.
But that would still only be from the lateral to the city, so that'd only be for the park part, and I don't think it would cover it all.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it's a bad situation, and hopefully you can get this resolved. All right, Brittany.
There you go, good on ya.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you for coming.
All right, next one of the public comments this evening is Amber. Amber, could you come forth, please, and just give us your name and where you reside?
Can someone get the microphone for her?
You got it?
Can you reach it?
Okay, all right.
I can be loud. So my name is Amber, and I live in North Bend. I just wanted to address safety, more specifically the safety of people who've been victimized by members in the community. For months, we've heard about aggressive language and threats being made towards certain individuals with what appears to be little to no action taken against the people who've made the threats. Or any actions that have been taken have not been a deterrent, and the threats have continued. It isn't just the people that are being threatened that have noticed that little to no action is taking place. Those of us calling it out see it as well. Other victims in the community who may be needing help but are afraid to reach out are seeing it. And not too shockingly, those that engage in the threats see it and are empowered by it. Why else would someone who's made several threats against other members of the community feel so comfortable walking into the police station the day after threatening to beat up and seriously hurt members of the community while mocking the individual for daring to say that they would defend themselves against an assault and call the cops? Even after knowing a call was made to report the threats, the member felt comfortable walking into the police station and was then allowed to leave to continue harassing another victim of his while they stood across the street from the police station. To one of the victims, he said the night before, "Ha ha, you better call the cops ahead of time, F the cops. Help, help, I need the police. F'ing bitch. Trust me, I'm a CU, have 911 on speed dial." How good is a city when the abusers know that they can seriously hurt you and the cops can't do anything about it? Why hasn't the city addressed McCullough's actions as an attack on a victim when he dismissed a victim's fears of being assaulted by police or by people who threatened to kill her by calling her a drama queen? Wouldn't someone dismissing a victim's fear like he did be viewed as an attack on victims in general?
One minute.
Does the city feel he can fairly and without bias control his own officers when his own opinions appear to match those of the abusers? As a citizen, that is a member who is very vulnerable to those who would wish harm on me because of my physical disabilities, does the city feel like they are adequately equipped with unbiased officials who would help me if I were in danger or threatened? I personally don't feel that safe. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, the next citizen that wants to make a public comment is Cameron Langley. Cameron?
Cameron Langley, Coos Bay. Good evening, once again, mayor, city manager, council, and staff. The last time I spoke at a council meeting, it was August 18th, and I told you pretty bluntly, "Do something about racial justice." Well, today is September 15th, and what have you done? I've seen no action from you to combat racial violence here, and I know, I get the emails. So here's a solution you could start with, a Committee for Social, Cultural, and Community Development and Representation, an advisory committee dedicated to giving our sub-communities more equitable representation in our city government. This would allow you to better understand sub-communities of which you may not be a part of, and maybe this can lead to us finding out what the solutions to our problems are. In my online submission, I have included a PDF file for a document entitled "Local Government Citizen Advisory Boards" from the Municipal Research and Services Center in Seattle, Washington. This document may serve as your guide to advisory boards and committees and includes many examples of advisory boards and committees in different municipalities throughout the state of Washington. One excerpt from this document reads, "Benefits of Using Advisory Boards." Ideally, advisory boards bring together citizens' views that may not otherwise be heard. They are made up of persons of wide-ranging interests and expertise who want to participate in public service but may not wish to hold a public office. Advisory bodies can provide assistance to the legislative body when formulating public policy and help transform policy decisions into action, address issues of interest or conduct background work on technical or politically sensitive issues, serve as a way to build public consensus on controversial issues before elected officials make a decision, give the community a forum for discussion in greater depth than is possible before a legislative body, and provide a more thorough review of complex and significant matters than a part-time council may be able to give. Oh, and also provide expertise without expending budget money and assist in the resolution of conflicts. I hope you'll find this document useful, and hopefully it will make you support the committee we've requested. Have a good night.
All right, thank you, Cameron. So I'm going to address Cameron's comment about a committee. So we have advisory committees, we have many advisory committees. In fact, we just took some interviews and took some people that applied. They're always available, and we encourage them to get involved. We also have advisory committees, and in this case, if you feel it's necessary to have this committee, which I think it might be viable, you can form this, just like the Empire Association does, the Downtown Association does. We have different advisory committees that form themselves and then have representation to this council. I think that's possible, and that's something that you can do. I would encourage you and your fellow supporters on this to do that. It's available to you. We are always open on these committees to listen. In fact, Rob Miles goes to them in that committee, and we have Stephanie who does the Downtown Association. We all interact with these different committees all the time. I totally agree with advisory committees. This city believes in advisory committees. I know you can listen to the rest of the council, give their opinions about it, but we interact with these advisory committees on a regular basis, and we support it. So I don't disagree with you, and I doubt that this council would disagree with you. So thank you for bringing it to our attention, but there's an avenue for you if you'd like. Okay?
Is there an advisory committee building, like, direction, directive? Like, is there, how would one go about setting up an advisory committee for maybe somebody who would be interested?
I think what the mayor's talking about is someone if they want to start their own community coalition and want to report in.
Yep.
They could certainly do that. If they have items of interest or directions that they would like to take, they certainly could do that. And I think this is something separate from the city. The council, of course, can set up their own committees, and it's, those are spelled out in the council rules how those are set up. Currently, you have a large number of committees, and just as we went through right now, you had three different committees, the Library Board, the Tree Board, and the Planning Commission, and you have just enough applications to actually fill those positions. And sometimes we have difficulties filling all the positions.
Yeah.
I would caution you on setting up another one.
Well, and you know, going back a little bit to Carmen, I just want to explain, you know, when, four years ago, when I came back onboard and some of the councillors that we have before us, it was decided to work, set up work sessions. Because in my opinion at that time, we had all these committees, and the councillors were all interacting with these committees and being representatives on there. In my opinion, it fractured us, and it was difficult to get that information to us. So in my opinion, it was important to slim down some of these committees unless they were really directly influencing the city in some aspect. And you know what Cameron Langley suggested? I have no objection to it. In fact, I support it. But what also we did is we did the work sessions, and so now what we did is we had these committees come to the work session. So these committees would report to the work session and the council as a whole, instead of getting the information secondhand. And so it also made a benefit. But like, for instance, there was a need with, I remember the Empire Coalition that got together. They felt there needed to be a voice in Empire. They formed that committee, they got a group together, they meet on a regular basis. They asked for the city for some assistance, which we do, through flags, through updating some things that we might not need, that not know what's going on out there. And so I definitely think it's important. The Downtown Association, same thing. We helped financially do some things with them, but they've been involved for a long period of time. They felt that they needed a voice. Downtown Association's been going on as long as I've been here. I got here in 1979. Downtown Association was going in form then, and it's still strong and moving on. And I think it's an advocate, but they act independently, even though there's an advisory to us, they act independently and then work with the city. And I think that's something that can happen here. I mean, you know, we have to be careful on how far we spread ourselves. But I think it's important to listen to citizens, and if there's a need, I think that they need to form the committee, and I think that we need to listen to them and participate if we can and help.
Yeah.
I think the best part about the fact that they come to the work sessions, to the point you made previously, Joe, or Mayor Benetti, is that they come to the entire council, so we all hear the same message.
Yeah.
And I think it informs us better as a group if we need to advance any objectives for them.
And so to address Amber's comment, is Deputy Chief Chapin are here? It's hard to see around this plastic, I don't know why. So Deputy Chief, I know there was an incident that came up, and I believe that you have a report on it. Has some information, I should say. And so could you give us a brief report on what happened and has transpired to your knowledge?
Yeah, so I believe the incident that she was referring to actually occurred, or came to us on Sunday, the 13th. Apparently, there was some argument going back and forth between a couple individuals on Facebook or some type of a social media account, and neither of the parties involved in this kind of back and forth reside in our city. And really, didn't, the exchange of that information didn't occur in our city, from the nearest we can figure. But the following day, so I guess apparently most of this stuff started happening Saturday, towards the evening. Sunday, we were brought into this by an individual that contacted the police department and reported to one of the officers that this exchange of bantering back and forth had been occurring, and that there was actually now a potential that it would kind of come to head in our city, near City Hall. And there was actually a time in which was indicated that they would meet. So I was contacted and advised of this, and I said, "Well, let's just keep me informed, and if it does come to our city and in front of City Hall, we would obviously make contact with individuals involved and see what we could do to assist." The actual initial time passed, it was about an hour later, I was contacted again and said that one of the involved parties had called the police and said that they believed the other involved party had now shown up in front of City Hall at the police department and believed that they were potentially armed. Hearing that, I asked the officers to go out and make contact with the individual and find out if there was something that that person needed to report to us, or, you know, something that we needed to be aware of. And so the one, there was one officer that initially made contact. Another officer shortly after arrived who had contacted with, had contact with the other involved party, so had the other side of the story. And so at one point, there was two officers that was in front of City Hall making contact, trying to get down to the bottom of it, finding out if there was actually a crime committed and if it occurred in our jurisdiction. It was a fairly brief contact. There wasn't any information reported to us. That was actually a criminal act that would have occurred in our city. The other party never showed up, so there was never actually any physical altercation or exchange of even verbal altercation in front of police officers or in front of City Hall. The other party left, never actually arrived. And so again, we advised the person that we were out with to if there was some type of cyber-related crimes or something that they felt was criminal in nature, to report those back to the jurisdictional agency in which they reside in and/or to DOJ, Department of Justice, and/or the FBI. And so they were provided that information, both parties in separate locations. The officers cleared. I will throw out that the entire incident was recorded. The officer did immediately introduce himself as standard protocol. Introduced himself, advised that the interaction was being recorded, both audio and video. Later in the conversation, there was also reference, again, that he pointed out his dash cam was recording both audio and video. And so the exchange was very, fairly brief. The officers did clear. And within a few minutes of them clearing that incident, they actually was dispatched to a second location several blocks away to make contact with the other party and provided that other party the same information. And also suggested and requested that they do not meet, and that they just go on their separate ways. And if they felt like they were a victim of some type of cyber threats or cyber crimes, to report that to DOJ or their jurisdictional agency. And they were out with that individual for about 10 minutes. They cleared that call, and within two minutes, they were dispatched to a motor vehicle accident multiple blocks away, and they were tied up on that motor vehicle accident. I know that there was some suggestions that officers stayed around in the area and sort of, you know, surveyed them for, you know, 30 minutes plus. That is just simply not the case. There was simply no workable crimes reported to us, and both parties were advised to block each other and from the social media sites that they are engaged in and to, again, if they thought they were a victim, to report back to the jurisdictional agency. And that was really the gist of the issue.
So the thing that we hear or I see frequently is that there's been threats made on social media in some aspect, and that we as a city or representatives of the city should do something about it. I guess you mentioned, unless they are part of our city, resident of our city, that really we have no standing whatsoever when it comes to this. It would have to depend on their jurisdiction, and I guess this is the law that is out there. So Department of Justice or FBI, all these are available to these individuals if it happened in other areas outside of our city, right?
Yes, for the most cases, absolutely. Cyber crimes are extremely difficult to work. You have to figure out where they actually occurred. You have to report that to that jurisdictional agency, or some of the state agencies or federal agencies can work those. You also have to identify who the actual sender is of that message. We all know that technology, you can ghost somebody's computers, send a message out, and make it look like it came from them, which in fact it really did. So there's a lot of investigative techniques that have to be applied to cyber-related crimes. And then we have to apply the First Amendment rights to those cyber-related crimes or exchanges of verbal confrontation. So you have to look at what is actually a crime or what is freedom of speech. And I know that's a delicate subject for some, because they feel that they have been a victim or they've been offended or whatever, but that doesn't always constitute a crime. So we have to apply the law, we have to look at the constitutional rights. And first of all, we have to establish venue, which is, which, who has jurisdiction over this type of crime? And a lot of times, because they're coming from different areas, sometimes outside of counties, from one county to the next, or even one city to the next, or even one state to the next, your state agencies or your federal agencies, like Department of Justice or the FBI, is better equipped to handle those multi-jurisdictional type of crimes.
So just to be clear, if there is chatter between someone living in Portland and someone living in Medford, and there are cyber threats, we, and even though they're potentially meeting here in Coos Bay, we have no jurisdiction, the persons would have to go to Portland and report that, or Medford and report that, is that correct?
Unless the crime happened-
The actual exchange of that, if there was some crimes that occurred during that exchange, yes, that would have to be reported to the jurisdictional agency. Now, obviously, if they met here in Coos Bay, and there was a physical altercation or something occurred as a result of that, that physical portion, if it was assault or something like that, that would be our jurisdiction.
Okay.
So, you know, that's where it can get kind of complicated. You know, Coos Bay Police Department is not trying to shy away from any type of taking a case on, we take many cases. We're not concerned about working or investigating cases, but we have to establish venue, and we have to be able to, to, it has to be a workable case, and it also has to constitute a crime. And so, yeah, if it was Portland and Medford, in those cases are very difficult. DOJ or the FBI would be the best, because Portland's going to look at that and say, "Okay, well, there's exchange of all sorts that occurred in Medford." And Medford's going to say, "Well, it happened in Portland," and there's going to be some cross-multi-jurisdictional issues there, so DOJ or FBI.
The FBI, okay, thank you.
Just one more question.
Sure, go ahead.
You had mentioned that the officers, once they cleared the scene here at City Hall, they went to another call, which was a motor vehicle accident.
Yes.
And that was important. Again, I missed what the importance of that was.
So I believe there was some suggestions that the officers remained in the area of the initial contact and more or less kind of spied or just remained for over 30 minutes. of the initial contact and more or less kind of spied or just remained for over 30 minutes and, and watched. And I was just simply saying that that wasn't the case. Within 17 minutes, we were responding to a motor vehicle accident on Woodland and Merle, I think, multiple blocks away. And that was only 17 minutes later, and we had already been dispatched to the other party involved and spent about 10 minutes with that party. The other thing was is there were some suggestions that there was at least four officers, we only had three officers working that day entirely. So, and only two had contact with both parties involved. And we contacted both parties in similar matters, two officers, as standard protocol.
Okay.
And police logs are generally a matter of public record. So when, and when a situation is called in and it's assigned, what, what it is, what time, who responded, is all available to the public. I think you regularly send out police logs. So it seems that there's some misinformation that seems to occur, but those are matters of public record. And if people are concerned about that, they can, they can request that.
You're absolutely correct, yes.
I had a quick question. So in terms of if somebody feels threatened and they, let's say they do live in Coos Bay, could they call the police department and report that they feel threatened? Is that something that?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, absolutely. We, like I said, we, we'll take reports and oftentimes, we have to kind of figure out where we direct a person or if it's best suited through FBI or DOJ. We have communication, like we've discussed before. We, we have a direct line of communication with those agencies as well. But anyhow, so yes, please, if somebody feels like they're being threatened or if they feel like their life is in immediate danger, absolutely contact the police department.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else, questions?
Curious from academic standpoint and maybe the public's information more than anything else. When we talk about taking the information, building a case, if it were something that didn't constitute anything, but it still made it through the channel anyway, what, what happens to that information?
So we have a lot of cases that don't maybe rise to the level of criminal action. Those cases, they still, they become a permanent record, whether it is through a log note, we call them L numbers, log notes, or LP number, which is actually case number. A lot of times, we, a lot of police force is documenting those very issues for future. You never know where that case may be a key piece for another investigation that you're working. So they become permanent records, they are available to the public as, as we indicated earlier. And so we do encourage people to call and, and report it. And we can also help steer that person into the appropriate agency or, and if it's not a police matter, that's all right as well, and we'll document what, what we can. And oftentimes, they'll end up at the DA's office for final review. And the DA's office might be able to say, yeah, that's a chargeable offense, or no, that's something that we're, we're not going to be able to charge.
So that information from the Sunday event still is in a log somewhere that could contribute to a case down the road if something did occur?
Yes.
All right. Anyone else? So if I understand correctly, Deputy Chief Chapinor, that there was, there is a voice and a video of this transaction between, that the officers indicated, because she said that they were recording this, am I correct?
Yes, we had it recorded on our dash camera. And there's a microphone that the officer wore, so audio and video was, was captured.
So if somebody wants that, if I understand correctly?
Contact.
Okay, so they could ask for public records, apply for public records and get a copy of the video for a fee because there's a cost associated with this, is that correct? So anyone can do that?
Yes.
Right? So, and also, I think that unless the council disagrees, I think that we should make this available to the media at no cost. And if they want to do something with it, it's there for them to do. If everyone agrees, we'll just make that available. Okay? All right. Thank you so much, appreciate your report. Everybody's accurate and appreciated, appreciate it. Okay, next item on there is consent calendar. Council, would you like to proceed?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Circuit.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as submitted. Are there any of the comments about this consent calendar? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Okay. Earlier this evening, we did some interviews for the Planning Commission. There was two interviewees, a Josh Stevens and a Terry Pittenger. We were asking for one appointee. In the meantime, Chris Hood, who's a current or was serving on the Planning Commission, resigned. So now, and that leaves us two positions available. And it's, so it is up to us or our decision, we can appoint one of these or none of these or both of these to the positions. And so what is the desire of the council to do? And normally, we have a ballot that we do and sign, but under the circuit acts, we won't. So I'm going to ask for a verbal decision on this.
I move that we appoint the two candidates who applied for the Planning Commission to fulfill the positions open on that.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to go ahead and appoint both Josh Stevens and Terry Pittenger to the two positions on the Planning Commission. Any comments or discussions, more, anymore? Roger?
I was just going to inform the council that both of the open positions, the one held by Ryan Wortman and the one held by Chris Hood, they both expire at the same time on
Perfect, that was something I was wondering about as well.
Perfect. Answered the question then. Anything else, anyone?
I unfortunately was not here to participate in the interviews, but I heard from council that these are two very qualified applicants, so we appreciate them giving their time to help the city.
Yeah, you know, and as, as we mentioned during the interviews and as Roger mentioned during the council meeting, you know, to have individuals step forth and volunteer their time is always appreciated and welcome. So I want to thank them in advance. Anyway, with that being said, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Great, I look forward to seeing them and I do thank them for doing their duty and stepping up and helping us here. Next item on the agenda is also approval of appointments to the library and the tree boards. So there were no interviews on these and the appointees that were serving on those boards have agreed to re-up, even if they weren't willing, Carmen. I'm kidding. Anyway, and a couple we have on the council that are on these boards, one being Carmen and one being Rob Miles. And so, anyway, I, unless there's some reason not to re-appoint these, I would suggest that we get a motion to do that.
Can, I probably can't vote on this, right?
You can.
I can?
Yes. There you go. That means you too, Rob.
I'm not on here.
Are you on the library board?
Yeah, but I'm not up for anything.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah. Did you say I can do it or you can?
I'll move to approve the reappointment of James Moore to the library board, as well as Carmen, Councilor Carmen Matthews to the Parks Commission.
Oh, tree board.
Tree board, sorry, to the tree board. I also move to reappoint Catherine Walworth for the Downtown Association and Brian Allen and Cora Vandervelden to the Downtown Association Board.
Tree board.
Tree board, thank you. Confusing, I apologize.
All of them.
Circuit. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to reappoint the positions that were just stated by the motion made by Councilor De novo. Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Thank you. Next item is presentation of the external investigator findings. And this is going to be virtual, am I understanding?
It is. So maybe I can set the stage a little bit.
Yes, please.
On August 8th of this year, there was a protest in downtown Coos Bay. After the conclusion of the protest, there were some social media posts that made allegations that Coos Bay police officer pushed a pregnant woman to the ground. And then also that allegations that Coos Bay police officers were seen flashing white supremacy hand signals. I should note with you that at no time did we actually receive any written complaints or were any complaints lodged here at the city. Despite that fact, it was concerning due to the large amount of publicity those social media posts got. So I took the initiative and asked for an outside person to look at these allegations. I contacted the Lane Council of Governments, who now houses the local government personnel services office. At one point in time, I served on that board, so I knew that they do contract and provide third-party investigations. We were able to bring an investigator on board, and that investigator is online and available to give you an executive summary of his investigation. And there, I'll turn it over to you, Mike.
Okay. Hello, my name is Michael Hudgens. I'm a licensed private investigator in Salem, Oregon. And I was contacted by Lane Government Personnel Services, LCOG, and presented with information that the city of Coos Bay was looking for an outside investigator to conduct an investigation into two areas. And the two areas were, did a Coos Bay police officer push a pregnant woman on August 8th, 2020 during a street protest? And also, did any Coos Bay police officer or officers flash white supremacy hand signals on August 8th, 2020 while policing the same protest? And there was a, there was information put in the media for, it was Coos Bay Police address alleged protest incident. And in that, it included an email address for myself as well as a phone number. And if anyone wanted to speak with me about having information pertaining to that, I would contact them and set up interviews. So I started getting many, many emails. And some of the emails were positive for the police. So what I would do is I would forward those, I would ask them to contact their city council if they wanted to provide that information. What I did start sending was when, when people said they had information, what I sent was, I said, I included the two allegations and I said, do you have direct knowledge of the specific allegations? If so, are you available for an interview? If you live in Coos Bay, I can make arrangements to interview you in person. If you live in the Portland area or Willamette Valley, we can schedule an interview at my office in Salem. Please contact me at your earliest convenience to schedule an interview. And I would like to point out that there's times when, due to financial reasons or someone not having transportation, they cannot come to Salem. So I go to them. And it's important to me, like, I know a lot of investigators right now, and I might be getting off the subject, but I just want to kind of set the, the stage why it's important to meet face-to-face on allegations like this. So it's, it's important if a person is being accused of it, and it's important that if a person is accusing someone, saying that really happened or they believe that happened, to sit down with them and interview them. And I did sit down and meet with any and all who were willing to talk with me. I set up appointments for them in the Coos Bay area. One of the things I would like to do is, I would like to play this video and it's, it's a few seconds, and I just want to kind of let you see, like, set the tone and let you see how things were going. And it's a, it's a TikTok video. And Deputy Chief, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
And, and I have a, there we go.
I can hear you, Mike. The video is about to play. No. But I can tell the council that this is the video that sparked the investigation.
Right, there, there were many allegations made in the video, and I was asked to investigate two of those allegations. And so if I did, I, I was contacted by a person who said, well, hey, I was the victim. And I sent an email back and I said, well, I'm going to have to refer you to your local law enforcement if you were a victim of a crime. So I did that, but this person, they wanted to meet with me and I tried to set up a, a meeting. It didn't work out because they were unavailable. And then I did follow up at a later time to keep following. When someone would contact me by email, I would wait or I would, I would contact them, no response, I would wait, I'd re-contact them again. I need you to contact me by a certain amount of date and time. Some people did re-contact me and say, okay, I don't have any direct information. And other people still wouldn't contact me, but I just kept going, going. And then finally, communication ceased. So I gave everyone who emailed me an opportunity to come down to be interviewed. And I've, I received from a gentleman, many hours of video of the protest, Black Lives Matter protest, that day, they were live-streaming. So I got these videos, one was like three hours, 59 minutes and some seconds, another one was two hours and 23 minutes, a 20-minute one. So anything someone sent me in a video, you know, it's like what people usually show up and, I don't mean this in a bad way, they'll show up at a scene with a taken video. So I could see everything that was going on, like almost having a front row seat. And I, the young lady in the video came down and did an interview with me. And from interviewing her, it was by, I had come to the conclusion that when, when the police responded to the area of Bay Shore Drive in Anderson, it was already a physical confrontation going on. And the one young lady that you see in the video who's pregnant, she was already involved in a physical confrontation with a counter protester. She was trying to hold back a protester that was there protesting with her, but she was dealing with some counter protesters. So she was kind of in the middle, trying to hold that back. And when the police showed up, the police came and they started separating people, just to get in the middle and divide everyone, to have one side on one side and the other on the other side. And she said during that time, a police officer had physical contact with her. And she thought herself that it was probably an accident. The young lady removed herself from there. There's a second video I want to go to. It's the video that's two minutes, I believe, long. Chief, Deputy Chief? That's it. And this is the officer who's being pushed.
He's one of the two that fucking did the OK sign earlier today.
By the likelihood, it was a different officer.
This fucking officer.
Yeah. The officer was trying to separate.
I was like, hey, that officer, he's like, oh, and I was like, I interviewed you earlier back during the OK sign. He's like, oh, okay. And I was like, oh, okay, yeah, I got it, buddy. And his ass, there, he was, next thing you know. We're filing a complaint against you.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
For sure. Yeah. You can't be showing people. I'm sure we got it on film, too. So now we gotta find what's her name that got shoved. So I got the officer's name. I had an interview with him earlier, over at that corner, right over there. He was seen over here giving them the okay sign, which is a Proud Boys fucking sign. We're gonna file a lawsuit. You need to be involved. I'm gonna get this video to the right people. What is your name?
Her name's Jolie.
Okay. And, and what I determined was, from, from interviewing her, uh, there was, now, mind you, with all the people there, what I want you to know is, there was no one who had direct knowledge or saw this police officer or any police officer push this lady to the ground. And as you could see with all the people in a crowd like that, um, with all the people in a crowd like that, you would assume someone would have seen that to have direct knowledge. And, uh, there was no one that I interviewed that had direct knowledge that, uh, that a police officer did that. And then the second part of the investigation was, uh, the police officers were allegedly using, uh, what has, uh, turned into, uh, the white power sign, what we, or at least I commonly knew growing up as a kid was the okay sign. Um, it was alleged that many officers were doing it. And again, with all the video I looked at and I, I saw, I saw none of that. And not only am I watching the video, but while you're watching the video, you can even see people with their phones taking video. And, uh, no one came forward with anything pertaining to that. No one has a photo of that, nothing. Um, there is another video, and it's about twenty seconds long. And this is where someone goes up and asks the police officer if he was doing it, flashing the okay sign.
There, flash. I had a question. Some of the people over here saw you guys flashing the okay symbol, which is the white supremacist thing. Do you guys know what that?
They didn't see me do that.
You weren't over there doing that?
No.
Okay. And what's your guys' names?
Eric.
Okay, and what's your name? Okay, cool.
Now, you know, one of the things you have to notice about this, this video is, he goes up, he asks the question. They just, "No, I didn't, no, that's not true." He asks them their name, even though you can see their names on a uniform. They give them their name, they're totally decent with him. And then he just says, "Okay," and he, he stops videotaping. So, uh, again, no one had any direct, uh, people said they saw it, but they had no video, even though there was livestreaming going on all day. And many people, uh, there for the protest were videotaping, and no one brought forth anything like that, forth anything like that. Does he have any questions for me?
First of all, Mike, um, can you give us a little bit of background? You know, you just said that you investigated this. I mean, you have, uh, some expertise in this for some reason. Can you give us a little background of what you've done that makes you, uh, qualified to be an investigator and do this?
Yes. Um, I was a, oh, I started out as a correctional officer in nineteen eighty-five, and I worked for the Oregon prison system, uh, conducting investigations, uh, while working with inmates in the prison. I left there. I was a police officer in Albany, uh, for twenty-four years. While I was a police officer, I was a detective for eight years. Um, and then I retired from police work in, uh, June of two thousand and thirteen, and then I got a license, uh, a couple weeks later. And I've been doing criminal cases, employment cases, civil cases, uh, since then. Uh, I know that's a glance over, but when I was a police officer, uh, I did a lot of, a lot of gang-related cases, uh, hate crimes, uh, homicide, uh, from your basic theft, DUIs, uh, starting out. But then, you know, as you get older in the police work, you start to shift a little bit more to the things that you see that you'd like to investigate. And mine was a little bit more into the difficult stuff. Uh, uh, you know, cases that will involve many people, uh, and it's not just something that's, uh, a simple, "Let me give you a citation, you go on about your business," but some cases that could go on for weeks and months at a time, and there never end up being an arrest.
Okay, and the other thing is, um, you were contracted by the League of ElCog to do this investigation. You were not contracted by the city of Coos Bay. If I understand correctly, the city of Coos Bay contacted or contracted with the League of Oregon Cities to hire an investigator, and they contracted with you.
That's absolutely correct.
All right.
I have a question.
Yes.
Why is that background important in an investigation of this type?
Because what, what you wanna show is, you wanna show, uh, I've done these kind of investigations before. I, I'd like to give you an example. The difference of a, a private investigator is, uh, you get a license. And in working in corrections or working in police work, you have a certification, and it's, it's totally different. Your training is always up to date. I still do my training through, uh, Police Officers, uh, Oregon Police Officers Association. Uh, I still get, uh, all my training through them. Uh, the, the importance is, you can say, "I know what I'm looking for. I can sit down, I can read through, I can make a decision on who I think, uh, would be witnesses here." Sometimes when I, when I, uh, I'll even ask a witness, "Do you know any other witnesses I could talk to?" I commonly do that. Anybody that wants to talk to me. So what you're doing is, you're not just focused on if there was three people here, you're focused on, like, I wanna get, especially in an incident like this, as many people as I can, and you know how to put these pieces together. You're going through, you're, you're, uh, sometimes what might not be important to one person is totally important to me. These, it's just the small things that you're looking at. You get the feel for the overall totality of everything that's going on.
And one other question. Uh, having that background, some might imply that there is some bias because you are a former officer. How do you separate, and you alluded to this in, in your licensing, but how do you separate yourself so that you can be objective in your investigation?
You know, the only thing I have, uh, in this lifetime is my word and, uh, my integrity. And, uh, if you, uh, my mother used to say this, "If, if you sell your soul, you can't buy it back." It's important to me. Uh, I'd, I've done many employment investigations where, when the report hit the attorney's desk, they, they were like, "Wow, this, this is hard for me to grasp." And, uh, I told, uh, Steve Dingle, Lane County Council, in July of two thousand and thirteen, when I, uh, first got a license, he said, "Uh, hey, I want you to do some cases for me." And I said, "I cannot do a case for you if you, uh, if you're looking for someone to ever try to get you or to get to change their answers." And, uh, I've even had the question where people say this to me, "Well, who's paying you?" I go, "Hey, I'll take a check from you, too. Here's the thing, the result is gonna be the same." So it's important to me. I mean, I still have a, uh, certification. I could lose my certification for lying. It's too important to me to, uh, to ever do that for money.
And again, uh, the city did not directly contract with you. They contracted with ElCog, correct?
That is correct.
Counselors, other questions? So, Mike, uh, these, uh, interviews and this, uh, report of yours is anonymous and confidential, am I correct?
Uh, I believe you have to talk to your, uh, is it city attorney there?
Yep. So can you give us an interview? Okay, I know that I have not seen the report, and, uh, and I know that, uh, we got a message from Nate that stated, uh, that this is confidential.
Certain portions of it probably are confidential. I think we need to take a look at the report.
Right.
Yes. And I, uh, I, uh, I apologized, and I apologize profusely to Roger Craddock, the city manager, that I, uh, was under the belief I would have this report done. But because of the content and the severity of the, the allegations, I didn't feel like, uh, the citizens as well as the police officers who are being accused, I didn't feel like this could wait for three more weeks to, uh, uh, get on the agenda for October. So I asked, I said, "Well, can I just do it now so, uh, people are not waiting?" And I hope that was okay, but I still think it was the best decision.
No, that's fine. And I know that you kept this investigation open to try to get as much information and make sure that everyone had every opportunity to come forth with any information that could, they wished to come forward with. Uh, and we put this out on our social media pages. And, uh, so I guess I'm asking you, how many people did you interview?
I, uh, received response from twenty-nine emails, and I interviewed six citizens and six police officers.
Okay, so out of those twenty-nine emails, uh, only six were willing to be interviewed?
Yes.
And also, you did interview, if I wanna make sure I heard you correctly, a little bit hard to hear in here, that you interviewed the woman that was pregnant that, uh, the TikTok, uh, video showed and stated, uh, that she was pushed down by, uh, one of our officers.
Yes. And, uh, I would like to state, she, she did not contact me. Um, how I got in contact with her was, uh, a gentleman sent me some stuff, some videos, and I wrote him an email and said, "Hey, do you know how I could get in touch with this, uh, the pregnant, this pregnant woman?" And he sent me her name and phone number, and I contacted her, and then we communicated by email, and she was willing to come down and talk to me.
And can you reiterate what she stated in the interview, please?
She said that on, uh, August the eighth, two thousand and twenty, she had stepped in between a fellow protester and some instigators. She was holding back the fellow protester as she had her arm up to the chest of one of the counter protesters that she actually knew. And she was involved in a pushing and shoving match with three counter protesters, uh, that she knew from attending, uh, public school. And she said, "An unknown officer separated her as well as the counter protesters." And she said, "As the officer was separating them, he pushed her, but she told me it could have been an accident." She said he may have not, uh, seen her stomach and seen that she was pregnant. She said she assumed the officer knew she was pregnant because he had talked to her previously about something, something unrelated. And, uh, she did not know who the officer was, but was told by another, uh, protester, uh, that this is who the person was. And you know, one of the things I would like to point out to you is, uh, when you go into the middle of a group of people as a police officer with, you've got pepper spray, you've got a taser, you've got, uh, a firearm, you've got an ass, you've got all these things on you, all these weapons. And there were also counter protesters there that were open carry, had a gun in a holster on their waist. And I believe it was told that one of the counter protesters actually had a rifle, uh, slung across him. And you, you're already at a disadvantage when you go through a group like this, because at any given time, somebody can hit you from the side, uh, you know, what's commonly referred to as sucker punch. And you could be out laying on the ground. So usually when, uh, in this case, the police go through, their goal is to just separate. And from what, uh, I investigated, that's all they were doing was trying to separate the groups, uh, apart to stand in the middle of them. And even when you get groups separating, you stand in the middle of them, you're still in a bad position. Um, so in this case, the physical portion of what was going on, had, it was already going on when the police arrived there, when the police went to intervene. And, and she estimated that there was fifteen protesters and about fifteen counter protesters that the police were dealing with.
So did she feel that she was intentionally pushed by this officer?
No, because when she said it could have been an accident.
Okay.
It, it didn't, it was not my impression when she said it could have been an accident.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Just one other thing, um, just a technicality. The video, the TikTok video that you showed here that was also widely disse- uh, disseminated on social media was not taken, uh, or recanted. Uh, the information wasn't, wasn't given by the actual, uh, alleged victim in this case. It was, uh, an observer or somebody that made the video, but it was not her, correct?
That's correct. And, you know, one of the things about, uh, this, uh, TikTok video, when I look at it, um, one, you don't know who it is that's narrating. And it's, it's one of these where, now that it's been posted, it is true. So that's correct. You, you, this young lady did not, I did not see from that video where this young lady walked over and said, "Hey, look, look what just happened to me."
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mike? So just one follow-up, Roger. I want to make it, I guess, as clear as we can. The city of Coos Bay and you and the police department, we did not have to move forward this investigation.
We did not, and by normal policy, we wouldn't, uh, do that.
So why did we decide to go forward on this investigation?
Well, I think it was more of a, a public image. Uh, and the fact is, there's been a lot of, uh, videos that have seemed to heighten, uh, racial tensions. And many of those, uh, social media posts are inaccurate in part or in whole, and such as this one. Uh, now, we now know it was totally inaccurate, and we thought it was important, one, uh, to determine on the outset, did our officers do something inappropriate? And if so, how are we gonna deal with it? Secondly, if they didn't do anything inappropriate, we need to exonerate them. Um, when I contracted with the, uh, Lane Council of Governments, I was very specific that I was not looking for a directed outcome. I wanted those two issues to be addressed, and they were advised that if there was anything that was criminal, we would then take that, uh, to a law enforcement agency and have a second investigation done that would be shared with the district attorney.
All right. So this is the end of the investigation, and you feel comfortable with it, and...
I do.
All right. Mike?
I would, I would like to add one thing I forgot to add.
Please do.
Was on the, uh, second allegation of, were officers using, uh, white supremacy hand signs. That's unfounded. There's no credible evidence to suggest or indicate this allegation is true. Um, and then as far as the, uh, did the, did an officer push a pregnant woman? You know, the officer's actions were justified, if that did occur, to prevent a physical confrontation. And that's exonerated.
All right. Well, I appreciate, uh, you, uh, doing this investigation and being so thorough with it. And, uh, so if that's it, uh, we'll let you go.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I also want to thank all the people that came forth and were interviewed. That was appreciated and, uh, so, all right. Next item, I don't see anyone from Marshfield Key Club. Probably a little bit too soon to ask them to.
Maybe someone online.
Do we? All right. Marshfield Key Club. Who do we have, uh, representing the Marshfield Key Club tonight?
My name's Luis Ariano. I'm the president of Marshfield High School Key Club. And I was just going to start off by talking about virtual learning. Based on the metrics outlined by the state, grades four through 12 are currently unable to return to face-to-face learning. Starting on September 14th, for the next nine weeks, students in grades eight through 12 will all be distance learning instruction. Grades four through seventh begin online learning September 21st. Because of the low numbers of students in kindergarten through third, they will be using the hybrid model, which is one half day in-person learning and the other half online. Instructual learning for all grades will be Monday through Thursday. On Friday, teachers will be available for students to get extra help with their assignments virtually. Students can make an appointment to meet face-to-face with their teachers for extra help as long as social distancing and PPE guidelines are in place, but only for no more than one hour. Key Club will also look very different this year. So far, our meetings have been virtual. However, as long as our projects are outside and we follow the social distancing and PPE guidelines, clubs can interact for two hours in small groups up to 50. We have a couple of outdoor yard projects coming up. One is on the Marshfield campus to redesign a portion of the front lawn. This is from a OSU grant we received. The other yard project is helping the Chamber of Commerce Education Committee makeover the Ark Project's front yard. We will also continue cutting wood with the Salvation Army like we did last year. Fall sports such as soccer, football, and cross country are starting in the early spring. Currently volleyball and baseball is semi-practicing outside while following all the social distancing and PPE requirements. And if you guys have any questions, I would love to try and answer.
Any questions? Well, thank you. I appreciate it. And, uh, so I'm hoping that we will hear from you at our next council meeting.
Awesome. Thank you guys for having me.
All right. You have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is, uh, approval of the story walk for Mingus Park. And, uh, Sammy, are you on? There you are.
I, I am, yes. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, the Coos Bay Library would like to install a story walk in Mingus Park. Um, it would consist of 16 permanent story walk kiosks along the walking path around, um, basically around the lake, starting in the playground area to the amphitheater. Uh, the stories would be updated by the library staff quarterly and would be, um, a valuable addition for families walking through the park and give them, um, a chance to do two things at once, exercise and, um, work on early literacy activities. Um, this project was discussed and approved at the August 20th, uh, 2020 Parks Meeting. Um, I would like to say I do believe, um, that there's talk of some work in Mingus Park. Um, so we could delay putting this in, um, if necessary till after that work is done so that it doesn't have to be redone. So, and then I don't, uh, there were some examples of the kiosks, um, included with my report and, uh, general map of where we would like to place it.
So do you have a, is there any way that you can show these kiosks on screen so people can see?
I don't have the ability. Does somebody have the ability on that end?
Okay, we'll pass. But I looked at it. I think it's very creative. I think it's a, a neat idea and it's wonderful to get the kids involved, uh, two ways. Number one, to read and also physically. So how often will the books change?
About every quarter. We'll do prob- three to four a year.
Okay. Comments, anyone?
I think this is an amazing idea. I was just there, uh, a week, week ago before, um, the smoke problems that we had in town with my seven-year-old granddaughter and we did a couple laps around the, the lake there. Um, I, I just, I can see her being excited by this and young people being excited by this. I think with the learning library there and this, um, that's really going to enhance that park. There were a lot of kids that will benefit from this. I'm excited.
Other comments?
Sammy, I'm just curious how you will go about selecting, uh, the books?
Uh, well, we, uh, that would probably fall to our youth services librarian who's, that's her, her niche. Um, and we just would choose a book that, um, obviously would have great appeal, um, and would fit within 16 stations. So it couldn't be too long.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a, uh, a targeted age group that you're looking for?
Uh, they're, it would mainly focus on picture books. So that way both kids who could read, but also kids who could be read to. It would appeal to both. And, and heck, adults would probably love them too. Everybody loves a good story.
Absolutely.
This will fit right in with Annie's, uh, library there that she's maintaining, yeah.
I was kind of thinking that'd be a great endpoint. And they could get their own book.
All right. Anyone else have some, uh, questions for Sammy? If not, uh, how would the council like to move forward on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the implementation of the story walk through Mingus Park.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, um, approve, approve the implementation of the story walk through Mingus Park. And, uh, hearing any other comments or questions? I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Great idea, Sammy. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
And please thank everyone that was involved and will be involved in it for us.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. Have a good evening.
You too.
Next item is consideration of award of the 2020 timber sale. Uh, Jim, are you going to be handling this?
Yes, sir, I will. Thank you. Uh, typically we try to get a timber sale, uh, for you every other year. And, uh, right now we're proposing a timber sale on 44 and a half acres in the, in the Pony Creek watershed. Uh, the timber volume and the, the location were all done for us by Stentner, uh, Engineering Forest Services. And based on that, uh, and they also helped, uh, put together the prospectus and bid out the project for us. And we did receive one response for the sale from Scott Timber Company with a bid in the, for the timber sale of $478,411.08. The final amount received may differ because it will be based on the actual board feet harvested. Upon completion of the harvest, spines will be needed to replant the land and reimburse the water board for the loop road construction and maintenance. And these costs are estimated to be $36,800. So what I'm requesting from council tonight is consider the award of the, uh, timber sale to Scott Timber Company and then approve the additional costs for the, the road maintenance. Any questions?
Jim, can you just, so basically we'll net 441K on this?
That's what we're estimating.
Okay. And can you remind me where, uh, the sales, where that goes in, uh, the budget?
That goes into our capital fund.
Okay, thank you.
And how often do we do this harvest?
Uh, every other year we try to do that. We almost missed it this year because, uh, timber prices were so depressed, but, uh, we've seen an uptick and our consultant suggested that we go for it.
So, um, how do we know that this is a good price since we only got one, uh, bid?
Well, um, because our consultant suggested that it was pretty good. Now comparative, uh, 2018 is quite a bit less. But then I looked back to see what, uh, sales had been since 2014, irons in the water boards. And they're still a little lower than average, but, uh, a lot closer than, um, what they could have been, I think, earlier in this, uh, this year.
So, uh, I don't know if ever, all the counselors are familiar with this. I've been, um, watching this for quite a while. And we're fortunate because, uh, it goes into our capital, um, on our budget and this plays for the police cars and fire trucks and public works, visit vehicles. And, uh, most cities don't have this opportunity and we're very fortunate. Uh, this is a budget, uh, item that we don't have to worry about because of the timber harvest that we do. And this is ongoing because we replant it and reharvest it. And, uh, and so I think it's wonderful, uh, that we're able to do this. So, anyway. With that, uh, if there's any more comments or questions, anyone? Hearing none, I need a motion on how you'd like to proceed.
I move we award the 2020 timber sale to Scott Timber Company and approve additional costs, uh, the repay, repayment of the loop construction, annual loop maintenance and reforestation planting contract required to complete the 2020 timber sale for an amount not to exceed $36,800.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to award the 2020 timber sale and the motion that was just made. And I know Nicole will be able to double this money quickly, uh, with her expertise. And so since I only see your picture up there.
It's on the record, by the way.
All right. Uh, any other comments? Hearing none? I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Thank you. Okay, approval of a resolution for executive session media, uh, attendance policy. And I think, uh, it's important that it's executive session. Uh, and so Roger or Nate or both, uh, want to handle this?
Nicole, I'm going to take this one. But, um, as a field of news and media events evolves, many municipalities are faced, uh, with determining which news and media entities qualify to attend, uh, executive sessions, uh, of, of local governments. With continued efforts and support of transparency, staff has conversed with, uh, other cities to develop a policy that provides guidance for those individuals who request executive session attendance. Uh, the current media landscape has evolved, um, past print and tele, telecast. That's, I think, as we all know. Gone are the days in which individuals waited to read their newspaper or community events, uh, in the evening paper or watch the six o'clock news. The community is now informed through, uh, print, radio, television, digital, social media and, and others as well. As such, a city's policies need to evolve, which includes the development of media policy. Resolution 20 dash 23 helps to establish a city's media policy, including addressing those who have access to attend executive sessions. I want to make it clear, this, this has, has no, uh, impact upon whether, uh, anyone who has a blog or something else, uh, can, can attend an open, uh, meeting of the Urban renewal agency or the city council. It simply is limited to the issue of executive sessions. And you've got to remember that the, the executive sessions are, are very, um, there's only certain, uh, topics that can be discovered, discussed in, in, in executive session. And the reason that the media is, is, is allowed into executive session is not to report on it. In fact, specifically they're prevented from reporting on it. It's basically to keep you guys from on topic, uh, and make sure that decisions aren't made in, you know, the old smoke-filled room kind of back door kind of thing that, that we've heard about. And that's why we have in the past, we don't always have, uh, someone from the media here at, uh, when we have an executive session. Uh, but that's the purpose of it. And, uh, unfortunately or fortunately, because of social media, you know, anyone who has a blog, uh, at this point might claim that they're media and should be allowed into executive sessions. And the, the purpose of this resolution is to set a policy which will allow, uh, people who are legitimate media people to be able to attend executive session. Part of that is to have them confirm and agree that they'll abide by the rules applicable to, uh, executive sessions. So if it pleases the council, uh, approve Resolution 20 dash 23 establishing guidelines for media attendance at executive sessions.
Questions for Nate? So Nate, I have one. So I know that, uh, in past, uh, we've had some, uh, media personnel come into an executive session. And I know of at least one occasion, they reported something that shouldn't have been reported. And, uh, if I remember correctly, the city, uh, did not allow that reporter to come back in. Didn't mean that we didn't not allow the media, um, business not to have somebody else come in.
The institution itself, the media outlet.
Correct.
But that reporter was not allowed in.
And, and also I, I think it's important to let everyone know that the executive session can be very sensitive. It's personnel, uh, negotiations, lawsuits, uh, timber negotiation, not timber negotiation, uh, negotiations on land, whatever it may be. So.
Real estate, yeah.
Yeah, we could find ourselves, if, uh, we weren't sensitive to this, we could find ourselves liable in some fashion. And so that's, that's the reasoning behind this. And as you said, it's really to keep us honest and also these are recorded. Am I correct?
Yeah, we do have minutes.
Yes. And so these recordings are available to those media personnel that's listed here at any time, even though they're not there during the meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
I think it's also valuable to highlight how much transparency Oregon has in this regard. And Nate might correct me on this, but I believe Oregon, or Stephanie might correct me on this, but I believe Oregon is the only state that even allows any media into their executive sessions.
I, I can't comment on that one. I, I'm not aware.
It is?
I don't know.
Oh, you don't know? I remember my wife brought it up when she worked for the world.
And where's your wife working now?
Uh, she now works for the county. So I know some folks were saying online that everyone on council is tied to the media and my tie was severed.
I know that, uh, that Oregon is, um, on the cutting edge as far as making sure that, uh, that the citizens do have transparency, um, when it comes to government bodies. Um, and everything from cameras in courts, courtrooms, that, that began here actually in this county and the state. Um, and, and this as well.
So Nate, are we breaking any First Amendment constitutional, uh, item, uh, thing by doing this?
No, we're, we're applying, we're complying with the, the law of the state of Oregon as it relates, uh, of, um, executive sessions. The problem is, is that the state legislature's not taking any action to describe or define what, uh, media outlets are. What is a media outlet? So local governments have had to take it upon themselves to craft their own, uh, policies in that regard. Someday maybe the legislature will do that, but they haven't had yet.
So we're not the first one to draft a resolution like this in the city of, uh, for the state of Oregon?
No, actually, uh, we looked at a number of different policies, uh, which included, uh, Salem's, Eugene's, uh, Roseburg's, uh, other cities and most cities bigger than, uh, the city of Coos Bay.
And Roger, this actually had been, uh, in discussion longer than just the last week or the last month or the last year.
I'm embarrassed to say that this was a topic that was brought up in 2017. It just fell low on the priority list in the past and it's edged its way up.
It's edged its way up.
And no, Stephanie, you don't have a conflict.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, comments?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, can I motion?
Absolutely.
Okay, I will move, uh, to approve Resolution 20 dash 23 establishing guidelines for media attendance at executive sessions.
Second.
Okay, I just want to make sure, does anyone have any other questions on this topic, counselors? Nope. Okay, hearing that there's no more comments, uh, it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 20 dash 23 establishing guidelines for media attendance of executive sessions. Hearing no more comments, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. All right, city managers' report.
Well, I wanted to share with you that, um, if you're driving by the Flora building, if you drive by on the, uh, Bay Shore side, now you can see evidence where they're taking off that siding and re-siding it, uh, with plywood. And I imagine it'll then have the, uh, weather barrier that's put on it and then the new siding, but, uh, they're continuing to make, uh, good progress. Uh, if you've driven by the Tioga, you've probably seen, and I think I sent you a picture, which is already outdated, uh, of the progress they're making. They're already starting the paint and, uh, putting some contrast colors. Uh, it's really neat to look at the top now and see some of the, uh, intricate work that really I didn't see before that's blended in over the years. Uh, so they're, they've gotten right on that and, uh, they're making great progress. Um, as far as, uh, the Egyptian theater roof, um, I think it was a little bit of a shock when they went up there and started pulling that apart. You know, that theater is nearly 100 years old. And it's quite possible that the original roof is still on there. Uh, not only that roof, but, uh, five other roofs on top of it. Uh, in Oregon, um, building codes do not allow you to put three, uh, roofs on. You're limited to two. Uh, I think, well, you might get three, but nothing. roofs on. You're limited to two. Well, you might get three, but nothing more than three. And when I say there's six roofs, you have the base, and today it would be plywood. And then you would have the roof material. Well, that's there. And then you have more base and more roof material, more base, more roof material, six layers thick. And it was actually, as explained to me, about six inches thick.
Wow.
That is a tremendous amount of weight. I think we're just blessed that we don't get snow to the levels and for the duration that other communities do, because I'm not sure it would have held up. But that's been corrected. The contractor worked with the city, and instead of putting through a change order, worked to get down to areas where there was two, two levels. If there was rot, it went a little bit farther so they could pull out the rot. But we are still on schedule and within budget to get the project done. There were some other identified issues with the trusses, but staff's going to take care of that. And it probably had a cost, materials cost of about $1,000. That project should be done in about a week and a half. And I would then say two weeks, because things always take longer than we expect. But making good progress and within budget. And of course, these are dollars that were raised by the Egyptian Theater Preservation Association. So they're very pleased, because they're hoping they have more dollars left over when they're done, because they want other projects to work on. But it was interesting to see, and without a doubt, it really needed, it really needed this roof job. There were areas where it was rotted, and there was areas where water was getting into the, into the theater. A year and a half ago, this council voted and gave the city staff permission to replace a fire engine. And we went out and we purchased a new engine. And there was many discussions about what we would do with that old engine. And the talk was at the time, we thought it had maybe some value, maybe 25, $30,000 worth of value, and we would try to sell it. Well, we've tried that. And we did get some offers, but they weren't very big offers. It is an older engine, so 1994. Correct me if I'm wrong there, Mark. Chief here, I know you're online.
Yes, that's correct, 1994.
1994. And it has seen better days. We've got a lot of good use out of that rig. But for 26 years, it was in service. We were in the process of putting it back out for auction, but lowering it to $5,000 or $6,000. And Chief Anderson approached me. And with all that's happening in our state and all the wild land fires, and the fact that there are some smaller departments that lost equipment, that was destroyed during the fire, he thought it might be a good idea that we, instead of putting that up for sale and getting $5,000 or $6,000, that maybe we find a way to donate that to another needy department and put it back into service. And so I think that's an excellent idea, and I applaud the chief for bringing that idea to us. And I just want to get your concurrence that that's okay.
It's a good idea.
It's a great idea. And we saved more on the bond, didn't we, that we did use to buy the, purchase the?
That would be the engine before this one, but we did. I think the difficult part for the chief, and he's gonna have to figure out how to sign which agency to give it, and it may come down to a lottery. But we'll leave that with the chief, if that's all right with the council.
That's great.
Sounds good.
Yep. Good idea.
About six weeks ago, possibly, there was a presentation before you with Sam Schwartz and Rick Stillwagon about an EDA grant, Economic Development Administration grant through the feds. And there was talk about what that grant amount could be, and possibly some ideas. And I think what was shared with us all, that that was about a $30 million ceiling. We've done a little bit of work, and we have been investigating this. And we're actually, it's more like a $3 million ceiling, based on the conversations we've had with EDA rep. We have been meeting not only internally, but we brought in our tribal partners that are working on the Hollering Place, the water board, because what we're thinking about doing, what we think fits the grant, is dealing with the, I guess, the things that are holding us back in moving forward with the Hollering Place. And that's the intersection at Newmark and South Empire Boulevard, Newmark going all the way down to Water, that would have to be upgraded, Mill Street, the fact that our pump station that's down serving that lower lot is not sized for future development of the Hollering Place or the property to the north. And possibly would be the same thing with the water source. So we're continuing to work with the tribe to see if they would like to co-partner with us on this project. But we believe that's the one that actually fits. We actually had bigger dreams. We were looking at some of the undeveloped streets by Marshall and Fulton, but we have learned that this grant does not, we would not support housing development. It really is more about economic development, primarily, they'd love to see manufacturing. I think where we get a connection to manufacturing is the industrial property to the north of Hollering Place is undeveloped. And upgrading this intersection would make it one less hurdle, should that property be developed, because that would be required as well.
Okay.
So we continue to work with the tribe. We have had conversations with the grant writer. And I am now having conversations, well, trying to have conversations with the county, because I know that Rick has also been talking with the county, because his project actually is out in the county. So I'm trying to coordinate to make sure that what they're gonna do, if anything, in applying for these potential dollars.
Great.
So like, we've demonstrated in the past, staff is always eager to find other people's money to benefit our citizens, and we'll continue to do that on this case. This last week, I had the opportunity to make a presentation before the Coos Bay North Bend Rotary. And they were wanting to hear what's happening in our city. And it's easy to lose perspective on what's happening when you see it on a day-to-day basis. And sometimes they say, like in orders, you can become nose-blind. Sometimes you can be blind to all the things that's happening around you. But putting together a presentation makes it a little easier and provides some perspective. And it's somewhat difficult when someone asks you to put a presentation together, and you have to figure out, how do you cut slides out? At one time, it was nearly 60 slides. There was that many different projects going on. But it was nice to put that together. They were kind enough to make a recording of that, and I've provided you access to that recording. It is a combination of all of the good work that this council's doing, as well as SWAC, as well as School District Nine, the participation from our businesses in upgrading their facades. There's a number of different things that are at play here. Not one of us can do this all by ourselves, but collectively, much can be accomplished in our city. And then lastly, the work that this council's doing has not gone unnoticed. We have been asked by the League of Oregon Cities to make a presentation at the upcoming LLC conference. You'll remember, we did something a couple of years ago. This time, we're being asked to present on housing and some of the different things that the city's done to spur on housing development. I recounted in my presentation to Rotary, if we look at the potential of what we have coming online based off the current applications and the pre-applications and the discussions we're having with developers, we could realize more than 500 new units in the next four to five years.
That's great.
And I think that where that's important, that exceeds the amount, maybe not in the red categories, in the Coos County housing study, but more importantly, the housing needs analysis that's coming before you, that was a very comprehensive undertaking, I believe, suggests that based on our growth and our history of our growth, that you're gonna need 500 units over the next 20 years. And you're gonna exceed that.
I find that so ironic, Roger, because it was members of this council that went, I think it was four years ago or three years ago, and we were inspired by other cities who had done so much work to develop more housing in their communities. So the fact that now we get to make a presentation really was spurred by what we saw at the conference. So, very exciting.
And I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you, Roger. Council comments. Rob?
I just want to offer a sincere thank you to all the firefighters, not only in Oregon but on the West Coast, for all the work, for putting their lives on the line to save the lives and property of others, many others, and offer best wishes for their safe return to their families.
Thank you, Rob. Anything else? Stephanie?
Well, I think fire is gonna be the topic. First of all, I want to send a shout out to our fire department. I know they were busy over the weekend with local fires and getting on top of it. And the reports that I saw on social media were so complimentary of our department and how quickly they reacted to some fires that happened in the brush along Highway 101. But also, the six-plex unit that had a fire in it that displaced, I think it was eight people. But I also, and I know that Carmen will probably elaborate, so I won't go into a lot of detail, but I want to send a huge shout out to Seven Devils Brewing, United Way, and countless volunteers who stepped up and said, hey, we'll be a vehicle to collect and distribute stuff to victims of the fires that are happening along the coast. But a huge shout out to our community. I observed a lot, just watching. I was waiting. So I was watching, and what I saw was what I love about this community. In a span of just hours, the community stepped up to supply whatever they could for those whose lives were devastated by the raging wildfires. It didn't matter what side of the political aisle they were on, what color they were, what socioeconomic status they held, what their philosophy was. People needed help. And they worked hand in hand to help those who were suffering and in need. And all I can say is thank you. Thank you for stepping up. Thank you for your concern. Thank you for giving. Thank you for your help. And in this day and age, thank you for your kindness.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Well said.
Jacinda?
I have to go after that.
I know, right?
I, it's already been said. I want to thank all the brave firefighters and emergency personnel who are working hard to distinguish the fires. My heart goes out to all the families that were displaced, that lost loved ones, or their homes were lost as a result of the fire. Stephanie, you so eloquently gave the shout out to Seven Devils, and I just want to say thank you for bringing people together. And it's always nice to witness, this community is always so incredibly giving and to step up. But it takes someone to actually say, I'll do that. And so I really want to thank Carmen and Annie and Seven Devils for all you do for this community. This is just yet one example of how committed you are to this community.
Phil?
Yeah, it's kind of hard to follow all of those comments, but yes, our hearts are out to everyone who's lost a place to live, or family members, or things close to them during this difficult time. But I would like to give you an update on a couple of things. Eastside School is supposed to be done by the end of the week. The punch list is being finished, and landscaping is supposed to be done by the end of the week. And so that's pretty exciting. And if you haven't been by the site of the old Harding Building, the new junior high, that thing has been going up really quickly. They use the technique that I've never seen done before, but it's pre-cast concrete panels. And they've been setting them all in place, and it's pretty cool. And if you go by there and you can see the detail on the inside, the hallway, the concrete is relieved with trees, so that you can see the etchings of trees in the concrete, which will be in the hallways. It's pretty cool. So I was wondering, Roger, next week is our, we have a work session?
Correct.
First one in several months. And I was wondering if maybe we couldn't get an update on what's happening with some of the streets. Ninth Avenue is taking a beating over there because of the detour for safe routes to schools. That detour has been there a lot longer than I thought it would be. And those poor people that live up in there, you know, they've endured a lot, because we've been detouring around a lot of work more than once. And I did notice last week, some potholes over there had been just filled in with asphalt, but they certainly weren't fixed. So I'm hoping that there's a plan that the city has to take care of Ninth Avenue, because it's really getting beat up. And also, if we could find out how much longer that detour's gonna be there, because it's been there for a very long time. I know they had to replace some infrastructure, so that'd be helpful. And also, I'd be interested to know what's happening with Fourth Street. That just seems to me like it's really going slow. Maybe it's on schedule, I don't know, but...
Yeah, it actually, it is on schedule. Currently, they're gonna be working on the sidewalk on the west side of the street. They pulled out a large section between Bennett and Donley, and they'll be replacing that. And then my understanding is they're gonna flip to the other side, do that side, and they're gonna work their way back during the winter months and do all the sidewalk and the other infrastructure that goes with that. That'll probably include the traffic signals. And then when they get towards the spring, that's when they're gonna redo the street.
Okay.
But I'm told the project as a whole will not be completed until probably the end of spring of '21.
Okay. I know there's a lot of work to be done.
You'll recall, we thought that the project on Golden took forever. And this is a much bigger project than the Golden Street project.
I do remember that. The last thing that I might mention is, with all of these wildfires, I've been extremely concerned about John Toppets Park and Mingus Park and all the underbrush and all the trees that we have. And I'm just wondering if the council is okay with asking the Parks Commission to take a look and see if maybe we should enlist a professional, a consultant, to try to implement some forest practices and see what we need to do better about those areas. Because if we do get a fire in those areas, I'm concerned as to how that would play out. And so I'm just, you know, I'm kind of throwing that out there. I don't know if it's the Parks Commission that we need to go to first, or how we need to handle that, but I'm really concerned about those two.
Roger, can you give us, because they did, I agree, that that's obviously something to consider. Didn't, I mean, we cleared out, cleared out that park, what, just, and I know I've walked it, and you have like trees that you've got marked that you're supposed to be getting rid of. Is that project done, all the clearing that you've done in that park, or is it a work in progress?
I think it's a work in progress. What we, what staff was doing is, we were using the services at Shutter Creek to clear out, and another agency to clear out a lot of the underbrush. Part of that, and part was to help with the illegal camping that was occurring in there. But it also provided a greater view and provided a greater feeling of safety. I think that will probably need to continue. I think what Councilor Marler's concerned about is that maybe we might need to undertake some other thinning of trees as well as clearing out the brush. I think, as I sit here and think about that, we actually do have a timber consultant on contract that we use for our water board exercises and management of that. We actually have a timber plan. But that's possibly something we could do. But I do believe it should go before the Parks Commission. This falls within their purview. And you've given them those positions for a re- This falls within their purview, and you've given them those positions for a reason, and it's good to hear them as an advisory group to hear what their concerns are and how that interplays and how the use of that park interplays.
I agree.
That's all I have. Thanks, Phil. Carmen.
Well, to jump on that topic, I don't know if we can request that the Parks Commission maybe attends the work session or has a report for the work session, or even just having Randy Dixon, the city staff head of the Parks Department, maybe be available for us to ask questions about various projects, because he's involved in the road projects, but also with all of the parks projects, and there's a lot going on in the parks, so I think that that would, that would help us. And if it couldn't happen, this work session may be the next one, if he has time to prepare.
I think it will probably be the next one. I sent out today at least an agenda, what I think's going to be on there, and I think we have to add one more, I think we're adding one more thing on there. It escapes me what we talked about earlier, Nicole, but I knew we were adding another item on there, the rate increase for solid waste. It's an annual thing. Going to one work session a month, there might be things where the council's just fine with not discussing it at a work session and just taking it to a regular meeting, but there may be other things where you can use these work sessions to actually have some discussion and help provide staff direction on things that aren't ready for a decision yet.
Yeah.
But we'll put it on the list.
Yeah. Pull on his ear there a little bit. I also wanted to echo on everybody else's comments about the recent environment that we find ourselves in right now, which is the existence of extremely dangerous and threatening fires. This weekend, I was part of an organizational group that basically pulled together a lot of resources, and that included the United Way, Stephanie over at KDOC. She was extremely helpful getting the word out, and the KDOC bump really worked, because we got a ton of support from the community. And I just, I mean, seeing that amount of just amazing support from our community is just, it's heartwarming, in a time when sometimes things can feel divided or dark, especially when you look up at the sky and it looks like Armageddon's coming. To have your community come together to support one another and to support people that they don't even know, just want to support people in general, it really brings the light out. And that's what happened to me this weekend. I'm extremely exhausted, but I'm also invigorated, because the generosity of this community once again completely, well, it didn't surprise me, but it made me extremely grateful for where we live. I was able to go up to the McKenzie Bridge area, which is where some of the fires were today, delivering, helping to deliver a couple of camp trailers for the firefighters up there. Thanks to Gibbs RV, they really stepped up and are willing to help out at pretty much anything we've ever asked of them as a community. And I can tell you that the air quality here is much, much better, so we should all be very grateful for that, and we should be very thankful for all the firefighters who put in themselves and risk of harm, saving countless lives and countless amounts of property, and also improving all of our lives by trying to get these fires under containment. So I just want to say thank you to all of the firefighters who are helping, and then all of the support staff who are there helping them, and then all of the people who give their time, give their energy, give their money, give their supplies to support these people and support those who've lost their homes. If you haven't been a part of something like that, I encourage you to, because it is something that will really warm your heart and show you the hope that humanity does have within it. So that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Carmen. Drew.
So, piggyback on the two main topics, obviously, best wishes to all the firefighters out there. It's hazardous work, even in a controlled environment with a controlled fire. I didn't much care for all that equipment, so being out in the middle of the woods with all the smoke and fighting the fire actively is, other than hazardous, also just generally sucks. So thank you very much to them for doing it. And then parks, I drove by the Pirate Park that Key Club did today. I was nostalgic, and my parents' first apartment was down less than a block from there, and that park is still looking great. So a lot of appreciation for them and our little community as well. That's all I got.
All right, thanks.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, one thing on the fires before you go. I forgot to mention, I told Tara over at the Deveraux Center today, we do have fire evacuees that are in our area, and I want to make sure and put it out there, if you can, make sure you put it out on your channels, that the Deveraux Center is providing services to fire evacuees. They're open Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. They have already made arrangements with some for showers, laundry, you know, generally, people that use their services give back time to the Deveraux Center. They're doing this in the most compassionate way, come and get the services you need, even if it's a meal or two. They do two meals a day, a hot meal, and they're also doing a packed lunch. And that way, they can save their resources for housing, because there are people in our motels here that need to save those resources. So it is available at the Deveraux Center, and of course, they will accept donations of food, snacks, financial, you know, that will definitely help. And I apologize for not getting that under my comment.
No, it's fine.
The Deveraux Center, there's another additional benefit there that I wasn't thinking of until you brought that up. If the individuals have been completely displaced, if their home is gone, the Deveraux Center has a software where they track all individuals that come in for services who have been rendered homeless, and that software connects with Orca, so that they have a faster track, receiving additional services through that route. So, a lot of benefit going to them.
Sorry to follow up on all that, but anyway, the tragedy that this state has faced and with these fires and everything else, and, you know, what we saw down at Seven Devils and the different groups that got involved, as Stephanie put out, this community always surprises her, and it surprises me. I'm always proud of this community, and I have been. I've watched them rally time and time again, no matter how hard and difficult it is for them financially and where we're at, but they always do. And as Carmen said, it's rewarding to do that and participate, and this community does it time and time again. You know, and it just is, it makes you proud, right? And that's why we're up here doing what we do. And we've accomplished so much. You know, I look back, and it's only been four years, some two, but for a lot of us, and what has been done and what Roger mentioned, that Rotary program that came out, I had comments that they were shocked and surprised what we've accomplished. You know, and sometimes I think we just need to step back and realize what we've done and what we've accomplished with our, it's not just the council, it's the staff, but it's also the community that got involved to do this, right? And willing to step up and do it. I mean, you know, the floor building, Heidi Soss, Tower Ford, you know, got involved and did it, and, you know, Rob Crocker with the buildings, and it goes on and on and on. Carmen, you know, willing to step and put a new facility in, you know, get the, I could sit here and just go on all night and tell you in every aspect of the city what people have done and are doing. So anyway, I just, I think sometimes we need to be conscious of what we've done and what a great community that we live in, and I'm very proud of this community. And so, anyway, I'll end it on that. Thank you. I guess this is about as normal we're going to be for a while, and so we'll be in these spots.
Cubicles.
Cubicles. They see Carmen and Rob have more than a cubicle, they have a space, I guess, or something.
Rob wants a phone so he can communicate directly with you.
Got the corner lot.
Anyway, thank you, everyone, for making this happen, and we're back to some normality, I guess, and we'll see you next Tuesday at 5:30 here for our work session, right?
Correct.
So if you show up at the fire station, it'll be in the wrong spot.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Good night. Meetings adjourned.
Please throw it out.
And there is no Urban Renewal Agency meeting, as it says, it's been canceled. So...
We're done, huh?
We're done. Oh, yeah, and Carmen, eleven-hour trip back and forth to get up here.
Four o'clock. Yeah. I'm tired.